All right, time to bring, time to bring the, uh, BOA meeting to order. First order of business is approval of last month's meetings. I need a motion to approve.
I got a motion.
A second. All those in favor? All right, move along to, uh, ZV number one. ZV five one two seven, eight twenty six Parkway, St. Simons Island. Consider request for a variance to Glen County zoning ordinance section 507 to allow up to a forty-five foot single-family residence to meet other standards of the resort residential RR zoning district. The lot is a substandard lot of record and section 507 restricts the residence to twenty-eight feet in height and one and a half stories. The point one-two acre property is located at eight twenty-six Parkway, St. Simons Island, parcel number oh four dash oh four oh five eight. And zone Resort Residential RR Venus Morris Griffin, VMG Properties owner and applicant. All right, Maurice.
Christopher Carey, Glen County Planning and Zoning. Right here is the property, so again, uh, this is a request to allow up to forty-five feet on the building height as it meets other standards for resort residential. The lot is a substandard lot of record and, uh, currently, that currently restricts this lot to twenty-eight feet in height and one and a half story. The property is a point one-two acre property located at eight twenty-six Parkway on St. Simons and it is also zone Resort Residential. Design plans for the new residents have not been submitted. The applicant is requesting a variance in order to design, uh, the new property. RR also allows for a maximum of thirty sleeping rooms per acre and this lot would be allowed for sleeping rooms. Here is a survey of the current property. There is a cottage on the property, uh, currently there. Here is a view of the existing. So the larger structure is the next door neighbor at six or eight fifteen Parkway and then the yellow arrow is pointing to the current property. Here's another view. So here's a conceptual, uh, conceptual elevation. And there are multiple letters in, uh, not for the structure opposing the variance. Here are your motions. Uh, staff does not recommend approval of ZV five one two seven as is a design change for the property, um, and we do have representation for the application. That is all.
Okay, um, anybody got any questions for staff?
Yes, did we? Did we issue a variance on that other one? On the one next door to it?
Possibly, that I do not know. I, I do know that we've had a couple variances, uh, and a couple plat, replattings, uh, for substandard lots, uh, to get to that max height, um, but yeah, I'm not sure on the one next door.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'm not sure where I read it, but I believe that house was built before twenty sixteen and then the ordinance was changed. There was no variance required on that, on that house. I saw, I, I, I read that somewhere, I don't know if it was in our packet or if I just in my own, my own due diligence, but I thought that house, so there was no variance.
No variance required?
No.
I think that was the case, I remember seeing.
No variance, no variance, no variance involved because it was before the, the ordinance was changed.
That is correct, that could be possible, yes.
Yes, sir.
I think I remember seeing.
Thank you, okay.
Uh, regarding the, uh, letters from the, uh, opposition, is that, is that to be read into, uh, the record or that, has that just become part of the record already?
Yes, that'll be part of the record, yes.
All right, any more questions for staff? Okay, all right, thank you, sir. Uh, ready to hear from the applicant, see here?
Um, my name is Mark Monroe, I'm speaking on behalf of Venus Griffin today on the lot nine, eight twenty-six Parkway. I'd just like to point out a few things that, uh, are of importance. This lot number nine was, uh, legally recorded, uh, in nineteen thirty-six. Just want to make note of that, it, this lot size was not, uh, a result of downsizing or splitting of the lot, it was originally platted legally in nineteen thirty-six. The reason that I say this is I, I'd like to read the ordinance, uh, five oh seven. I don't know if I'm allowed or not, but I made copies for everyone here in case you don't have the ordinance. Am I allowed to give those to y'all?
Sure.
Sure.
So I've highlighted a couple lines, but section five oh seven point one, it reads, "No permit shall be issued for the use of any lot which is smaller in total area than the minimum area permitted for the zoning district within which it is located or for the use of any lot which has a lot width that is less than the minimum lot width permitted for the zoning district and within which it is located unless said lot is a lot of record and was legally and properly recorded prior to the passage of this ordinance on February first, nineteen sixty-six." So five oh seven to us reads that this was enacted in nineteen sixty-six. So this is a lot of record before that and it allows for permitting on that size of lot. In two thousand ten, the neighbor of lot ten, which we, you spoke of just a minute ago at eight fifteen, in two thousand ten, they were afforded a permit based on, they were a substandard lot and a lot of record in nineteen thirty-six before nineteen sixty-six when this ordinance was enacted. That's how they got a permit because it wasn't a variance. Section five oh seven point two, which, uh, I understand is was enacted in two thousand sixteen, if you read the first line that I've highlighted, it says, "Notwithstanding any other provisions of, to the contrary, in this zoning ordinance." Well, that line speaks to the fact that this lot number nine, eight twenty-six, is not affected, so it doesn't apply to that because it would be contrary, contrary to five oh seven point one, which was established in nineteen sixty-six. So the, her neighbor, which you saw, you know, a garage three-story to forty-five feet, was able to do that based on the fact that it was recorded in nineteen thirty-six according to five oh seven point one, so Ms. Griffin should be allowed to do the same. I'd also like to point out that, uh, when a, when a person comes to our island to buy property, uh, do due diligence so forth when you buy property, but this lot, there's nowhere on it, on the GIS website or on the plat itself that says this is a substandard lot subject to five oh seven to inform people. Everyone would have to know every ordinance in the county to be aware of this. So I think that, uh, the original ordinance in nineteen sixty-six was developed to, you know, to maintain density. In other words, they didn't want people downsizing their lots or splitting lots and to maintain density. Well, this lot was not a result ever of, of downsizing or splitting. And so I think that if we read it, it states that she can build to forty-five feet in the RR zone. Another thing, I mean, it's the lot on the ocean directly. I mean, if she's not afforded to take advantage of that RR, which was been there the whole time, it's really devalues her property and she should be allowed to take advantage of every view of that ocean. So I hope, I hope this sheds a little bit of light on, uh, why Ms. Griffin should be allowed to build up to forty-five feet. Thank you.
So, uh, anybody got any question?
I do, uh, so the hardship here is that she wasn't aware of the ordinance, is that the hardship I'm hearing?
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not.
The hardship, the hardship in this instance is that she was not aware of the ordinance when she bought the property, is, is that what I'm hearing here?
Well, I know she was not aware of that for a fact, yes. In, in, in a story that, you know, is, is factually true, when she bought the property, the, uh, the Loach was the, the realtor company that sold it and, and they actually offered her plans, uh, to buy to build, uh, forty-five foot high, uh, but she didn't want to buy the plans from the, the previous homeowner because she wanted something a little bit different and she would have her own done. And so when she comes to buy this, I mean, she has seven children, she, she thinks, "Well, I can build to this forty-five foot, so in a year I'm going to come back and build it." So she had no idea of ordinance five oh seven whatsoever and was led to obviously believe that she could build to that height based on presenting plans from the original owner and the, of course, the fact that right next to her, you got a, a forty-five foot structure. And I will point out, if you ever go to that street, I mean, to her north, there's a, uh, condominium, you know, garage three-story. Her neighbor's garage three-story, to the south, there's another condominium garage three-story, so I think her house is very much out of place. In actuality, if she was allowed to build as the rest, it would actually be more pleasing to the island and, and that whole area because you can go up and down, all the way down to the King and Prince and everything is, is a, is a high-rise to take advantage of the ocean view.
Okay, uh, no more, any more questions for the applicant?
Yes, like, I, I need to unpack a few things, I need to unpack a few things. On the application, it says owner of the property, it's VMG Properties LLC and then the way I understand it, every time I read this, is that they ask for the address of VMG Properties LLC and it's given as eight twenty-six Parkway. But I was under the impression that this VMG Properties address is in Glen, G L E N N Avenue in Augusta. So I don't know, I don't want to get caught up in semantics, it's just that I, I, I felt that that wasn't upfront in terms of, I'm trying to understand this idea of this VMG Properties, I'm the owner, but I'm the applicant and then I check out VMG and I see that she's listed as an agent. And so that gets a little convoluted, wait one second, please, and then I'll give you a chance. And then the other thing is, it says present use of property, home for my seven children, two grandchildren and myself. I went to visit it and it's a vacation rental. So why isn't that on the application to be upfront and transparent that it's a vacation rental, I bought it for one point one-five million dollars in twenty twenty-one and, uh, for some reason, as based on what you were saying, you, she never asked for a permit, you're, and you brought us to this, this whole, your, your whole reasoning about five oh seven point two was about permitting when in fact you're here talking about a variance. And so this whole thing is just a little convoluted to me and if I'm, I'm not trying to make, be, put you on the defensive, I, I just trying to unpack all of this because I've been thinking about this for two, three days, so there you have it. And then if I have any follow-up, I'll, I'll ask you. So that's where I am, I am with this thing, to even get started thinking about what we're talking about. It's just not enough transparency for me in terms of what I'm being asked to do in terms of my responsibility to the people of Glen County and then I get the paperwork and it's like, all right, wait a minute, what's going on here?
Um, what I, I mean, to answer some of your questions, uh, she does, Venus, she does, she lives in Augusta, Georgia and she bought the property and she was, uh, going to wait a year to rebuild, so she does rent it out. As far, she is a real estate agent in, in, uh, in Augusta, Georgia, just to, you know, that's clarify that part of it, so.
Okay.
I, I don't think that there was any mislead, I don't think anybody's intentionally trying.
Well, I'm not, I'm not accusing, I'm not being accusatory, I'm just saying that when you fill out an application, it just let, because I'm reading it, I'm saying, wait a second, how is VMG Properties there, isn't that the property that's asking for a variance? And then, so I go, and then like I said, so I said, okay, that didn't make sense to me, then I go visit and then it's not a home, uh, you know, for her set, well, you know, that kind of thing, any case, can you explain to me your reasoning? You brought us through, like I said, five oh seven point two, where you're talking, you, you kept using the word permit, the other place that they could get the permit based on this and then you pointed out notwithstanding, but this meeting isn't about a permit. This meeting is about a variance to an ordinance that, that was on the books on St. Simon in Glen County in twenty sixteen, so I'm not sure what your whole presentation about the permit had to do with today's meeting about a variance for a twenty sixteen ordinance, as I understood it.
When we, when we talked to planning, uh, they would, they told us we would have to get a variance to build to forty-five feet and so that's why we went through this process to see if we could do that before she went and, you know, developed plans to do so. And now, as, as I read the ordinance over and over, then that, then it came to light that it was actually, the ordinance was actually formed in nineteen sixty-six and her lot was a record in nineteen thirty-six and it, that, so that's why I was explaining.
So before twenty, if I understand it correctly, Mr. Chairman and sir, before twenty sixteen, people were permitted to build twenty-eight feet there and then, no, they, they were permitted to build more than that, up to forty-five. And then the ordinance comes in and then it goes to twenty-eight. So she's not interested in building twenty-eight, she's interested in, so the whole, the whole point is you are coming here seeking a variance to the twenty-eight feet so that she can build forty-five, which has nothing to do with five oh seven point two, if I understand it correctly.
Well, five oh seven point two starts, is, uh, came in two thousand sixteen and it, and it set height requirement for substandard lots, but in the first portion of it, it says, "Notwithstanding anything contrary to the original ordinance" and so her lot was, uh, platted in nineteen thirty-six, which would allow her, uh, before the nineteen sixty-six ordinance to build to RR forty-five, just like her neighbor did.
Thanks.
Um, I did, I did have one thing and it, it might be, staff might have to answer this, to your point about this going into effect, uh, in twenty sixteen, it is my understanding that the reason that was put into effect was to prevent this, um, to try to maintain, you know, some of the character that is there available on the island. Looking at the plans, there's already two pretty major encroachments across the setbacks on the existing house as it is. I guess my question is maybe to staff, is there any type of grandfather clause? I mean, if, if everybody is grandfathered in just because it was platted before the rules changed, then why even change the rules, just let everybody do what the hell they want?
Right, so the ordinance came into effect to help reduce density, uh, on the, on the, that, that portion of the island, so you see the same thing in King City and East Beach and a few other places where those substandard lots are restricted to building to a specific height pertaining to the width and the square footage of the lot. So this, this would also fall in, to that same order that we've approved and denied various variances for building height.
Gotcha, okay, thank, thank you.
I, I got a quick question while you're, while you're up there. Um, this is, uh, you know, most of our residential zonings are R six, R twelve and that tells you how big the lot has to be, but in RR, there's really, is there, what is the minimum lot size?
So the minimum lot size for a single-family dwelling is six thousand square feet with a sixty-foot lot width.
Okay.
Do we have this, um, this plat in a bigger version to see what this actual lot width is, if it's too small, I can't actually read it. Does it have the dimensions on there anywhere?
Uh, the lot is fifty by...
My eyes aren't that good.
Fifty by a hundred, possibly.
Okay, that's all I had, thank you, sir.
All right, uh, is there anybody here for or against this application? Okay, here you step to the podium and give us your name and what you think about this situation?
Thank you, my name is Richard Altman, I own the adjacent lot, uh, at eight two eight Parkway.
Well, you're on which side?
On the, to the right of looking, my, you know, going toward the King and Prince, to the right of the property, that helped everybody, okay, I, I, east and west down there is, is not right. For background, I chaired the Planning and Zoning Commission for two years, that information is, for lots, is readily available, I'm also, was retired, but I was a real estate broker, that information is, if I sold a lot somewhere... estate broker, that information is, if I sold a lot somewhere, it would be available uh, in, in the, in the sales contract, if something was, uh, not able to, to build what you wanted to build. I believe it's a substandard lot, uh, I'm right next door, uh, I was limited, our house that was there was washed away in Dora in 64, uh, at the time, I was allowed to build exactly what, rebuild exactly what was there, and I can't rebuild again. This is what DNR has, has told me, I presume that's still correct. I could go no farther forward than the adjacent, they ran strings from the adjacent properties, from the porch of, of this lady's property that she just bought, as well as the condo next door, and I could go no further than, than that point, I could go no higher than the house was originally. And that keeps the character of the neighborhood, it, uh, it continues to be in my family, and it's been in there since, I think, the 19, late 30s. The lot, the lots are, they may be listed as 100 feet, but the ocean has taken part of it. Uh, I do not believe those lots today are 100 feet deep, uh, they may be 50 feet wide, but they're, they're not 100 feet deep, because mine's not, and mine's listed as the same size as this one, .11 or .12 acres. And I am, I am against the, uh, against the variance. Thank you.
My name is Gail Robuck Scott, I have 827 Parkway, right across the street from this house, my house was built in 1940 by the same lady that owns 826, I'm still in character. The house is a standard lot, I don't think she should be able to build a house of 45 feet, I think she was duped by her realtor, if that is possible, because she is a realtor, she did not do her due diligence, she is claiming, if anything, she should be suing her realtor not coming to you for a variance, I am totally against this. He is saying it's out of character on that street, it is not out of character on that street for her to have the small cottage, cottage, we are still small cottages across the street. I'm totally against this.
Thank you. Okay. You got anything, any rebuttal, you got any rebuttal for either one of them?
I mean, I think we've, you know, tried to point out all the areas of the ordinance, but I think the lot itself being done in 1936 has a, a major point, uh, before ordinance 507 was created in 1966, um, and it doesn't, the ordinance doesn't speak to time of possession, it just speaks to lot, the lot, not when someone owns it, it speaks to the lot itself.
All right, um, well, where are we staying on this? I feel like it was, uh, when it was bought, it was what it was.
Yeah, kind of, kind of my stance on it is, is, I, I agree with your point, originally being platted then, but rules change, as we grow and progress as a community, rules and zoning ordinances change all the time, you know, we're going through a big rig zoning changes as it is now, and those are done for reasons that present themselves as we grow as a community. And just my opinion, number one, ignorance of what you can or cannot do is not an excuse for me, uh, the due diligence should have been done, I've bought multiple properties, I do my due diligence before I buy them, so I know what I can and cannot do, or I try to address it before I purchase the property, so. Right now, I'm, you know, I can't vote for it, me personally, you know, just based on the fact that the rules have to change to, to maintain density, there's already a huge parking air, air issue in that area, I live nearby there, I walk down to the beach almost every day, and I have to get around cars that are just scattered all over the place, so it, it is a very tight road, and building something that, that big that will potentially have multiple more cars there, you know, we're increasing the density, which this was put in place to prevent or to at least slow it down, um, I guess I just, I can't vote for it personally, I'm not sure how my colleagues feel, but that's how I am right now.
Uh, that being said, uh, if nobody else has any comments, anybody want to make a motion? We've got four possible's up there.
I kind of, I, I agree with, with Mr. Woodman on, on this, um, I, I'm kind of thinking that, especially the buyer, the, the new owner, being a, being a real estate agent, should have done better due diligence, or, you know, at least inquired about this, so on that respect, I'm gonna make a motion to deny ZV 127 as, as presented. 5127, excuse me, that glasses, I still can't see.
Okay, I have a motion to, uh, deny.
I second it.
I have a second, all those in favor? Those against? Sorry, got turned down, uh, but you can, uh, appeal our decision to the board of commissioners, who made the whole. Okay, moving on to the next, uh, item on our agenda. ZV 5155, 298 North Harrington Road, St. Simon's Island, consider request for a variance to Glen County zoning ordinance section 701 to allow for an encroachment into the property's side setback to allow for pool equipment. The .2 acre property is located at 298 North Harrington Road, St. Simon's Island, parcel 04-05287, and is owned RR6, one-family residential, Justin and Sarah Davidson owners. Can I hear from staff?
Yes, so I'm not sure, is there, are the owners here for this application? I don't believe so, so you make, do you want to-
Should, should, uh, pass? If nobody's here, I say we, uh, postpone.
So we'll defer this to-
I did defer this.
Well, we have the option to, to turn it down because they didn't show, or we can, we can defer it to the next meeting, but somebody, somebody has to be here for, to represent, other than staff.
Well, yeah.
So, I mean, it's, it's up to us, do we want to defer it or not?
I, I would say yes, do, do we have to put that in?
All right, so, on, on that, on that, I will make a motion to defer it to the next meeting.
Okay. All right, all those in favor? All opposed? Save you some stuff. All right, let's move on to, uh, that was a good one. ZV 5158, 2012 Bruce Drive, St. Simon's Island, consider request for a variance to County zoning ordinance section 605 to allow for relief from the ordinance's double frontage requirement to allow for the addition of a portico. The .22 acre property is located at 2012 Bruce Drive, St. Simon's Island, parcel 0403101, and is owned RR6, one-family residential, Diane, Carol Carlson, and John Tuohy owners. Can I hear from staff?
Yeah, Maurice Postal, planning and zoning. Uh, the applicant are requesting a variance from the county's double frontage requirement, section 605 in the zoning ordinance, uh, the property has frontaged on two public streets, Bruce Drive to the north and Bruce Circle to the south, not considered to be a corner lot, because the section of 10th Street alongside the property is unopened right-of-way. Due to the front, double frontage requirement, the property has two 20-foot front setbacks, one on Bruce Drive and one on Bruce Circle. If the section of 10th Street next to the property were open, then this would be considered a corner lot, and the setback along Bruce Circle would be 10 feet, not 20 feet. Uh, the applicant's intending-
Go ahead.
Uh, the applicant's intending to construct a new portico for the existing pool in the southern part of the property, uh, the sketch plan shows the proposed portico encroaching into the secondary 20-foot front setback on Bruce Circle by nearly 10 feet. Uh, the pool was built in 2017, and it was properly permitted, uh, permit number POL 25152, it was inspected by county staff, and there was not any comment about setback problems. A previous survey done by SHUP in 2016 prior to the construction of the pool displayed a 10-foot setback on the survey instead of the required 20-foot secondary front setback along Bruce Circle. Uh, this is the zoning map, this is Bruce Circle right here, I'm, Bruce Drive right here, this is Bruce Circle, and this is the unopened section of, uh, 10th Street, it's currently treed. And this is the current survey. This red line is the 20-foot secondary front setback, this blue line is the proposed 10-foot setback along Bruce Circle, this black square right here is the proposed portico, and this is the existing pool showing that it does intrude into the, uh, secondary front setback. This is the 2016 survey from SHUP, showing a 10-foot setback along Bruce Circle. These are your options, and a property owner's agent is here today to answer questions when you're ready.
Okay, yeah, any questions for staff?
Uh, actually, I do have one, now, it is actually, the mailing address is actually Bruce Drive, not Bruce Circle.
Yes, no, it is Bruce Drive.
Okay.
No, the front, the front of the house is on Bruce Drive, but the garage is on Bruce Circle.
Gotcha, okay.
So, uh, if, if 10th Street was open, the setback on 10th would have been 10-foot?
And, and also along Bruce Circle.
And also on Bruce Circle, but since 10th is not open-
Right, and it's not, it's not in reality a corner lot, so it's subject to the double frontage requirement.
But when it was surveyed in 2016?
Right, in, in reality, it was unopened back then, just for whatever reason, SHUP didn't note on here that it was unopened.
And when SHUP, you're right, and when SHUP, uh, surveyed it, he considered that to be a secondary street, and so that's why, that's why he called that first 10-foot setback.
Right, and that's why the pool was allowed to go through.
And the county didn't say anything?
Nope, not at all.
How come we're not including that in the variant?
Well, it would be included because they're asking for the setback along Bruce Circle to be only 10 feet instead of 20, so-
So that would encompass-
So, so that would be included in, in the variant.
Okay. All right.
Can you explain to me, just for my own knowledge gathering, what's the difference between, well, what is an unopened right-of-way?
I mean, if you've been out there, you'd see, there's no road there, it's just trees, so originally, it was platted to be part of 10th Street, but for whatever reason, it was never built, so it, it's not a street in reality, it's just trees there. That, that's why it's unopened, it's unopened to cars, basically. Yeah, I mean, there's public right-of-way.
Yeah, there's a narrow path, kind of walking through it.
Okay.
It just looked to me like cars had driven there. And that's why I was just asking, I mean, I understand what unopened means, but if I had wanted to drive my car through there the other day, I believe I could have, as I stopped there and looked down, there was no trees, there was no nothing, I could have gone through there, so I was just trying to learn from my understanding, when you, when someone says it's an unopened right-of-way, I expected like trees to be there, or being like boundaries, you know, like you couldn't go through, but-
Do we have a photograph of that place?
I didn't include one-
And I couldn't miss, okay, that's a good, okay, I understand it, all right, that's fine, I'm good, unimproved.
I, I didn't include one in the packet, but as you can see on this survey, there are trees in that area.
Yeah, okay.
All right, any more questions for?
Thank you.
No, okay, Kevin Higgins, I need you.
Good morning, I'm Kevin Higgins, architect and agent for the owners, um, everything's kind of in the packet, but in this case, the owners, when they bought the house in 2020, 2021, they, they did do the due diligence and, and got the old survey and all, and everything seemed kosher to do what they originally planned to do with the house when they bought it, which was convert one of the bays of the garage to a pool house with an open porch to be enjoyed by the pool, so, uh, this is where we are, we didn't know this, um, and I assumed that was a, considered a secondary setback also, because it is a secondary street, um, so, but that did come up, um, the owners actually had SHUP, paid SHUP to go out and do an updated survey, just to kind of check everything, and that's where this came up, so, um, I, I hope you understand everything, and, and, but I'm available for questions, and, uh, hope to get it approved.
So second time SHUP did the survey, they called it out for a 20-foot setback?
That's when they, that's when they reviewed ordinances, I guess, and, and noted that it should be a double frontage lot, but that is definitely, I mean, Bruce Circle is definitely a secondary street, so, but that, going by the ordinance, that is, should be a 20-foot setback, so.
Just a quick, what, or what flood zone is this in? I, I guess my question being is, you know, assuming we approve this, are there going to be any issues with permitting, putting anything below the flood line if they're not annexed?
The garage, uh, we're, we need to build up the garage part of it, that's gonna be the pool house with a outdoor kitchen with a sink and everything, so we're gonna have to build that up about a foot to get it, um, into the flood zone, I think it's, uh, 89, I believe.
Okay.
But the portico, of course, is just an open porch, so.
Sure, sure, yeah, I was just thinking, you mentioned pool house, thinking, you know-
Right.
-electric facilities that have to be in there, that have to be above that.
Yeah, we are building that up a little bit for the actual pool house part of the garage.
Okay.
So distilling it out, basically, in the simplest terms, they're looking to come down the driveway from that garage door, 10 feet, and take the fence down that's facing the pool? So when I went there, there was a car parked there, and my guess was, that car is, is, is actually going to be the portico-
That would be in the portico.
That would be the portico, and so, they just want to come 10 feet out of the garage, basically.
Correct.
That's what they want to do.
Yep.
All right, any more questions for, uh, Mr. Higgins? Thank you, sir, anybody here for or against? No, I don't think there is. Okay, uh, y'all want to chat about it, or y'all ready for a motion?
Nah, let's, let's, this is simple, let's, let's, uh, I'd like to make a motion to approve ZV 5158 as presented, I understand that, you know, SHUP made a mistake years ago, corrected it, but still, it's a, it's a secondary road, I'm okay with this.
Agreed.
I second.
Got a second, all those in favor? Got your variance? Proceed as planned. If there's no other business, uh, our journey days be-